Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, good, I only have to look on this side of the room. The City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets tonight in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws Chapter 40A and other applicable laws. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The secretary to my left will read Mr. Dan Sensaba. Good evening. We'll read the legal notice or state that such notice has been waived. All applications tonight will be heard in the order they were received in the city clerk's office or as otherwise designated by the chair. They will be heard in the correct order tonight. The petition or petitioner's representative will present the subject application to the board. The chair may limit the length of all remarks. All parties and interests will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or in opposition to a pending application, and the board may receive similar or written communications to be placed on the public record. The petitioner will then be given the opportunity to refute any such remarks, and now while I will explain this to you in terms that you all can understand. So, this is how it works. When it's your turn, number one, two, three, four, five, we're going in order, excuse me, you'll come up to the podium, you'll state your name and address for the record, either you or your builder or your attorney or whomever you brought. You then will state why you're here, what you want to build and why. And remember, you are here for dimensional relief. At that point, the board will probably ask you some questions. I then will say, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor? If there is somebody in the audience that wishes to speak in favor, they will come up to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and tell me what a wonderful neighbor you are and how whatever you want to build is going to just make the neighborhood look so much better. Excuse me. I then will say, is there anybody in the audience to speak in opposition? And whoever is in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition will once again come up, state his or her name and address for the record, and tell us all the things that they don't like about you. Remember, we are not here for neighbor problems, disputes. We don't care that you don't like your neighbor's wife. We don't care that you don't like the way they conduct their parties in their backyard. We don't care that their leaves fall in your pool. We want to know why, whatever they're building, you just don't agree with it. At that point, the petitioner can come back up to the podium or your attorney or whomever and discuss if there is any oppositional concerns. Let me just state now, the best petitions that come to us are the ones where you have already discussed what you want to do with your neighbors, and if your neighbor has some concern, you've worked with your neighbors to overcome those concerns. At that point, we take a vote, one way or the other. If it is approved, you have a 20-day appeal period. If it is not approved, I'm very sorry, not everything can get approved. If everything that came before us got approved, there would be no need for a zoning board. I understand that everybody owns a house, and you own property, and you'd like to build, and you'd like to improve, and I agree with that 100%, but there are zoning laws that we have to abide by. We are a very fair board. As long as you don't ask to build something so high and so wide and takes up every bit of land that you own, you know, we're very agreeable. One thing I also would like to stress, you cannot talk to me or anybody here from your seat. I say this every month, and every month, somebody forgets to say something and they decide that they want to shout it from their seat. Please don't do that. The other thing is, if you come up to the microphone here and you start going on and on about, you know, stuff that we already know, we all love Peabody, we all live here, we've all lived here for, you know, many years, some of us work for the city, that's all great. It's not pertinent information to why you're here, and I will give you this, and that will mean enough. So, please stick to the subject. And that's it. We take a vote, you'll go see my clerk, Carla McGrath, she'll explain anything that you want to know whether you approved or not approved, and then we go on to the next person. In compliance with the open meeting law, this hearing is also being recorded by our clerk. When you come to the podium, please speak directly into the microphone and only speak when you are at the podium. And let me just also say that there is really no need to, this only happened a few times, you cannot video us on your phone, and there really is no reason to do that, we're on Channel 9, and we also are on, if you can believe it, Facebook and YouTube. So, if you want to watch us over and over again, you can find us. So, we are going to begin with number one, which is the continued application of Forty Oak Street. Do you want to read it?
This is the continued application of Forty Oak Street Development LLC for Chapter 40B comprehensive permit application as applies to the premises known as Forty Oak Street Peabody, map 95, lot 89X. Petitioner seeks to construct 80 rental units, the properties located in our four zoning district. This is a special meeting agenda item and is continued until January 13, 2020.
And now we'll go on to number two.
This is the continued application of SAS Capital Management and care of attorney Ethan Von Zalitis. It's for the project at the premises known as 157 Newbury Street Peabody, map 47, lot 41. This is a continued application, so the legal notice has already been read into the record.
Can't see without any glasses. Good evening. For the record, my name's Ethan Von Zalitis, and I'm attorney practicing law at 246 Yandale Street in Peabody. And with me this evening is Mr. Louis Karamis. He's the general manager of the SAS Capital Management. Now, the petitioner's property contains approximately 37,500 square feet of area. We are situated on the north side of Route 1, and we are in the BR1 zoning district. To the left of our property is the Oak Ledge Heights Cooperative Mobile Home Park. To the right of our property is Gators Gasoline Station, and then to the rear of that is the Golden Banana. Our property is a previously developed site. It was formerly the location of the Sir John Motel, which I believe was constructed sometime in the 1960s. Mr. Karamis had purchased his property in the mid-1990s, and in 1997, when the property was situated in the DDD zoning district, he obtained a special permit and a variance to construct a three-story, 58-room hotel, basically as it's shown on our submitted site plan. Mr. Karamis then went through site plan approval with the planning board, and then subsequent to that, he obtained his building permit, and he commenced construction of the project. He demolished the motel building, and he installed the footings and the foundation as they're shown on our site plan. He also installed all the underground utilities, along with installing the first-floor decking. Unfortunately, the petitioner's commercial lender actually went bankrupt. There was no more funding to complete the project, and as a result, his variance has expired, and it's now necessary to obtain a new variance in order to proceed with the project. It's important to note that the location of our existing foundation, along with our parking facilities, are at their current location at the request of our residential neighbors, being the Mobile Home Park, when it was originally approved in 1997. The petitioner intends still to construct a three-story building. It will contain 48 hotel rooms rather than the original 58 rooms, and he'd build that building on top of the existing foundation. The building's going to contain approximately 28,500 square feet of area. The lower level is going to contain a small breakfast area, an office, a laundry area, and a storage area. The first floor is going to contain a registration office, a lobby, common bathrooms, along with 15 hotel rooms. The second floor will also contain a lounge area along with 15 hotel rooms, and the third level will contain 18 hotel rooms. All the rooms are going to vary in size, it'll be between 288 to 360 square feet in area. Due to the unique shape of this property, the fact that it's narrow and long, along with the fact that it abuts a mobile home zoning district, it's actually impossible to construct any building on this property that would be in conformance to the BR1 zoning requirements. And obviously, that's a substantial hardship for anybody who owns the property. Because we abut a mobile home zoning district, which happens to be a residential district, footnote C to our zoning regulations requires that our left side yard now be 100 feet rather than 40 feet. As you can see from our plan, it's impossible to construct any building on this property that would have a left side out of 100 feet and a right side to 40 feet when the property's only 103 feet wide. In essence, the majority of our relief concerns landscaping. As you can see from the aerial photograph that I submitted with the application, the property is already surrounded by a lot of lodge trees along all three sides of the property, and the petitioner is also proposing additional landscaping as it's noted and as it's shown on the site plan. Now, this project does require two approvals. The first would be a variance from the Board of Appeals. A second would be site plan approval with the planning board. If this board should see fit to grant this evening's variance, then Mr. Karamis will proceed with continuing it on with the planning board. I do think it's a good project for our city. I don't know if any of the members have driven by it, but the property has certainly become an eyesore to the area. It adds nothing to our tax base, and I think now we have an opportunity to do a total renovation of the property and make it a productive asset for our city. Again, basically, in essence, we're just requesting to reestablish a previously approved variance, where all of our requests is due to existing conditions. As I said earlier, I have Mr. Karamis with me, I have Mr. Mello who prepared our site plan, along with our architect, and together we try to answer any questions that the board of the public may have. Thank you.
So, Ethan, you might have had something a little backwards. I don't know why I can't talk tonight.
We'll allow him to guide us.
Very, very unusual. You might have something just a little backwards. I'm not sure that tonight's board is going to be the number-one voting board, and we have something from the city planner that we want to read to you if you haven't.
I'm glad you brought it up, because I want to address it, all right? The board may not know this, but I filed this application originally in February. It was signed off by the building department, time stamped, and then, I don't know, a week or so later, I get a conference call. I got Kurt Belleviant, our community development department director, Al, our building inspector, and I believe Carla was on the call, and they said to me, Ethan, we want you to get rid of the variance application, we want you to go to the planning board first for site plan approval. So I said, well, no. I mean, site plan approval requires a lot of additional engineering. Engineering that costs probably 35, or a project this size, $35,000 to $48,000. So, I need two approvals. One without the other is useless. Well, we understand that. We want you to come to the planning board on the site plan review so that we can just finalize the parking configuration, the landscaping, to see if there are any reports from various departments where they might ask for some revisions to the site plan, and then you can get your variance and finish off the engineering if you get the variance. I said, that's fine, that's what I'll do. Went to the planning board, we started the planning board review process, we got the memo from the Department of Public Services, the exact memo that we were expecting to get. I told the planning board at their last meeting to please continue this to your January meeting, because I'm going to apply for my variance, get that first, and if the variance is granted, and if the 20 days go by without appeal, then we'll be back to the planning board and do the required engineering. I mean, I realize you're board members, but you have to put yourself in the position of a petitioner. You're coming forward with a project that requires two approvals. One without the other is useless. One of your approvals is going to cost you between legal and engineering, let's say, $3,000 to $6,000. The other approval is going to cost you between $35,000 and $48,000. So you're going to go for your cheapest permit first, because it's a necessary permit. Without the variance, there's no project. If I go through planning, site plan review first, spend all this money, and I get their approval, but the board denies me, or I'm abut of appeals, what a waste. There is no harm to the City of Peabody if the variance is granted, because it's useless without site plan approval, and you can condition your variance decision on that. I've been, I have been appearing before this board in the city council now for about 35 years. I have done countless number of projects that have required either a variance or a special permit, or a variance and a special permit, plus site plan approval, and I have never, ever done site plan approval first, and I have never, ever been told I have to do it first, and it's unconscionable.
Okay, I get it. I'm just telling you what we got from the city planner, Mr. Von Zalitis.
I believe he said, if you see fit. He's leaving it at two yards discretion.
Why don't we read it into the record? How's that?
All right. Are we reading the same one?
This is a memorandum through the chair. This is a memorandum to the chair of the zoning board of appeals from the Community Development and Planning Department, from Andrew Levin, the city planner. Subject to application of SAS Capital Management, 157 Newbury Street. The date is December 9, 2019. Regarding 157 Newbury Street, this is an application by SAS Capital Management seeking a variance for the construction of a hotel on an existing foundation on the site, needing a side yard setback, front yard minimum buildable lot width, and landscaping variances. The applicants and their representatives were last before the planning board on September 19, 2019, seeking approval of a site plan review. No action was taken by the planning board. The Community Development and Planning Office would recommend that the Board of Appeals, if they so choose, not issue a decision until the applicants have received an approval from the planning board. The planning board is awaiting a review of the project from the Department of Public Service before taking action. The Department of Public Service, as mentioned in their attached memo dated September 5, is in need of documents and materials to review before issuing a recommendation. If the Board of Appeals has any further questions or requires further information, please feel free to contact Andrew Levin, city planner, and the phone number. Andrew Levin.
So they are leaving it up to the board's discretion.
Through the chair, to the petitioner. The old cat before the horse, now which comes first, the chicken or the egg, and you know, all that stuff. I think what you said makes a lot of sense, but you do realize that we're probably going to condition this to a positive site plan review through the planning board, and that you have to satisfy all the Department of Public Service. What if you go to site plan review and you are in opposition to some of the things that the Department of Public Service says? Where does that leave it?
It means you don't build your project. You don't get a building permit in this city unless the Department of Public Services signs off on the engineering.
Okay. Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition?
Motion to close the public hearing. Make a motion to approve conditional upon approval by the planning board in compliance with all Department of Public Service requirements as may be deemed fit and determined at the planning board meeting.
Call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. I hope you all have a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a happy and healthy New Year. I'm going to try.
Number three is a continued application of Site Tenny Residence.
The last time we met on this, I know I raised some concerns regarding the.
Want to present anything first, or who wants to present?
Thank you, members of the board. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody. I appear this evening on behalf of Site Tenny Residence LLC, and as Mr. Osborne has begun this matter, had appeared before you, and I'd just like to give a very brief history of this site and this project. An order of conditions has issued in August of 2017. That order of conditions is recorded at book 375, 37566, page 305. During that process, there were no comments from the DEP, no appeal of the DEP, by the DEP, nor was there an appeal by any neighbor. There are 81 conditions that apply to this order of conditions. 75 of them are standard for a project that is this large. If you look at the order, which I have a copy of if anybody would like to see it, 1 through 75 are standardized requirements, and the last 6, 75 through, 76 through 81 are unique to this particular project and have us having certain peer review being done at the time that we're constructing. There has been associated with this project, there was actually an original order of conditions for this development on this site, not this development, but for a development on this site, which was issued in 2008. There was no appeal of that. There was no DEP involvement or appeal of that. When we came back with this plan that is before the board this evening, when we came back, we had already been through a water quality, the necessity for a water quality certificate issuing from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Department of Environmental Protection. That letter did issue on 9/17/2018. That letter essentially says that you can build this project without impacting on water quality, inasmuch as there are certain, not only resource areas on the land that we're in question, but we are nearby certain protected areas, and that review has been completed by the DEP, and they have given us the green light with respect to, and given the commission the green light with respect to moving forward. We were also reviewed, this project was reviewed by Meridian Engineering as part of peer review to determine whether or not we had any impact, whether there was an impact of the, we had an impact on the conservancy district, or whether or not the conservancy district contained in the, in our zoning ordinance, whether that impacted us in any kind of negative fashion that came through as a no. Yes, we could go forward, and we did. So we've had two orders of condition. We've been to planning board, we've been to site plan review in the form of planning board and construction review committee. Both of those agencies have completed their analysis, and both of them have committed or completed their review of the project and have allowed us to move forward. Now, this evening, we're here as the result of the passage of the residential overlay district that would be available to this project in the BR zoning district. That has caused us to be before the Board of Appeals, because we do not meet certain setback requirements, and we are parking in an area, although we comply with the parking, we're not asking for any variance for parking. We do have some parking that is located in an area that is dictated by the presence on three sides of wetlands on this property. So we have a small amount, very small amount of parking, which is in the front portion of the property, and that requires a variance. We require variance for rare setback. If the property, if the building had commercial usages on the first floor, we would, in all likelihood, not be here whatsoever. But we have very little interest in commercial usage of the property. We didn't really want to put any residences on the first floor, inasmuch as we are in a floodway and as a flood plain, and as such, we can't have residents on the ground floor, so we have parking on the ground floor. The building touches the ground by virtue of columns, and then also our elevator and lobby on the first floor, and we have provided compensatory storage for those small areas. So we've been through quite a few, we've been through all sorts of scrutiny and reviews, and I think that when we were here the last time, it was not clear to the board exactly how long this project has been before various boards and agencies has been reviewed by the Department of Public Services, and as such, we're here now, hopefully, in the final leg of this project, which is ambitious, but is something that the city has, through the city council and community development department, has given, given a blessing to, and we'd like to move forward this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have with respect to this project.
Before, I just, is the ward counselor here this evening? No. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson, and, like I said, sometimes we are probably more cautious than we should be, but I think it's our job to do that, and we had some concerns that we wanted to be addressed. The commercial part aspect of the property, I guess I sort of agree. I took exception to the fact that you were looking for relief from that, but further review of the actual ordinance does give you relief, as long as you increase your setback by 300%, which I see, which actually is why you're probably here for that type of relief. So, the ordinance itself does allow you not to have that commercial. I would agree with that right now, that I was probably a little bit off-base when I say that it didn't meet the intent of the ordinance. Maybe the intent is to try to get that mixed use, but it's not a requirement of the ordinance, and after further review of the language, it was written in such that they should propose or try to, or that type of language, that, nothing that required it. Again, thanks for the history of the project, it was very helpful. I think that looking at what you're actually here before this board for is pretty reasonable. I looked at the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission and the order of conditions from the city council. The ordinance does name the city council as the permit grant, does name that the residence portion of the ordinance will be by special permit, which is the city council. We are not a special permit granting authority. They are. They've done their work. I think they gave you a pretty solid, locked up those order conditions pretty well. I mean, you're going to have a very difficult time. As a matter of fact, I think the last condition says, you must meet all components of the ordinance. So, with that being said, you know, why double the hill? So, I guess I've changed my viewpoint a little bit. I see no reason, based on what you're actually before us now, I don't think it's a huge issue. One thing I would say, that they allow four-foot-wide planting areas along the wall adjacent to the X-Way. Do you plan on any planting area?
Yes.
All right, so that'll be handled in site plan review, I take it, okay?
Yes.
Everything else, as far as the businesses go, where it's going to be located, you probably never get any business to go in there anyway, so why have a requirement to have businesses? So I'm... So I'm willing to vote in favor of this. I think maybe the last time I was a little overzealous to, as far as the business component of it. The ordinance definitely is written in a way that you can, you can do it, and that's why you're here. Because without the commercial part, you gotta increase your setbacks 300%, and it's obvious you can't do it, so you need relief, so. And the relief you're seeking, I don't think is that bad. Thank you.
So the green space, there's not much green space right now, is there?
It's four-plus acres, and we're only developing a portion of that. And as such, the green space that surrounds this, which is wetland, will be untouched. So on three sides, we're not touching it then. That's part of our requirement with the Conservation Commission. And then we're adding green space along our driveway and over on the area as it gets a little closer to the park behind us. We've also actually had occasion to meet with the representatives of West Peabody Little League as to whether or not we could work together and whether there was some way that we could assist them with respect to flooding issues they have on their land, and we are continuing to look at that.
So you have met with the president of West Little?
Yeah, Mr. Moore.
Yep. So that's part of your plan, to work with them to try to alleviate some of that flooding?
Can provide access to some parking spaces if they were to be interested in that. They didn't seem to have much interest in that. They wanted predominantly or primarily to see whether we were gonna force any water back to the parklands, and we are not. All our water is exiting out the front portion.
You did say that you'll probably still conduct those conversations with him at some point? I know this is probably, it was just a thought. Did you ever think of putting any sort of green roof on this entire project?
There was a thought with respect to that. However, some of the costs that would be incurred in doing that would be somewhat, we got most of our equipment on the roof, and we don't have the greatest roof space in the world, so it would have been pretty cost prohibitive to try to do a green project on a site that is this small.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor?
Hello, my name's Audrey Gordon. I live at 17 Pine Street, so I'm a direct abutter. My position in favor hasn't changed in the reasoning behind it from the last time. Do you want me to repeat it for the record? Okay, okay, great. And I just want to thank you, Barry, and other members of the Board for being so thorough in your investigation of this matter. I do appreciate that you're really looking out for abutters like us, and hoping that this residential project does move forward. Thank you.
Anybody else in favor, in opposition? I just have one more question for you. So 20% of these units will be affordable housing?
That's correct. We've asked for no relief from that requirement.
So hearing no other opposition, we have, this matter is now before the Board. Eddie, you, excuse me, Mr. Colbert, you can vote on this.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Madam Chair, ah, gotta find it. Move to approve, condition that they meet all the conditions as set forth by the Conservation Commission and by the City Council. So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
No. And passes.
Chief, Board members, thank you.
Before is a withdrawal. Yep.
Number four, this is the application of Robert Brock, care of Daniel Donovan. At 10 Maryvale Lane, we received a communication, or phone conversation rather, between Robert Brock and the clerk, Carla McGrath, today. And Mr. Brock requested to withdraw his application without prejudice until a revised plan is completed. Because this is a continued application, and I wasn't here at the last meeting, I suggest that somebody else make the motion to allow that withdrawal.
Move to allow the withdrawal without prejudice, the application from, who is it? Robert Brock. So moved.
Second. In favor? Any opposed? Five.
Notice hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, on the application of Sean O'Neil and John Zerpolo, trustees of 112 A Birch Street, Peabody, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 714, as it applies to the premises known as 3 Calumet Street, Peabody, map 95, law 261B. Petitioner seeks a variance and requires relief to the height requirement where 30 feet are allowed and 32.3 feet are proposed. The property is located in R2 zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's office and Board of Appeals office at City Hall in advance and prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Mass. Appearing on behalf of 114 Birch Street Realty Trust, Sean O'Neil and John Zerpolo are the trustees at that trust. They are developing properties located on Sutton Street and two properties on Sutton Street, and this duplex, which is located on Calumet Street. As the application reflects, we are asking for a variance from the height requirement. We're asking for 32.3 feet rather than the 30 feet that is required. When we first applied for our building permits, we showed a site plan that had shown driveways accessed from the front and from Calumet Street to the front of both of these properties. Subsequently, we, after having applied for building permits and foundation permits, poured the foundation and then decided with our site contractor that our driveway, rather than being from Calumet Street up to the front of the house, and if there was to be a garage there, we would have had to drop down eight feet from Calumet Street to the garage floor. That would have been very steep, and we would, that would have also resulted in some fill on the right-hand side of the property, which is where we're proposing the driveway be now. There would have been approximately about two feet of fill added to that side of the property so that there was a constant grade of, resulting grade of 52 or 53 feet. That would have put our rooftop in our high point in compliance with zoning. It would have been just about exactly 30 feet. When we decided to have the garages accessed, put the garage under and then access from the right-hand side, that resulted in no fill being added, no increase in the height differential between our property and the citizen who lives to the right, who is actually a house on Beckett Street, that house fronts on Beckett Street. We have added a riprap construction wall, which is beneath the parking lot and which takes us to a trench, which is located on the right-hand side. All of our water from the parking lot will now go into that trench, and that trench carries water over other properties owned by my client out to Sutton Street. So there is no, there is no water being shed onto Calumet, and there is no water being shed onto our client's, our neighbor's property as a result of this change. However, the impact of that change is that we are now 2.3 feet over the height, and we are asking for relief for that variance. We believe the product has turned out to be better, is less impacting on our neighbor, and as such, we would ask the Board to provide us with that relief. The height, I'm sorry, the elevation at the left-hand side of our property is some 66 feet. The, all of Calumet Street flows from the left to the right if you're facing the front of this property, and it's a pretty steep hill. And we would point to that steepness and that grade change from one side of the property to the other property as constituting the hardship that is necessary to be addressed this evening. I would thank you.
Okay, not yet. So a plan was submitted, and a permit was issued, and the prefab arrived, and Building Department went by, and something looked off. So the Building Department looked into it, and they found that they, there was an elevation discrepancy, and there was a plan change, which you did refer to. You said, "So you decided to change the driveway." Well, there are a couple of questions that I need answered. Number one, this, correct me if I'm wrong, but the builders are experienced builders, or the engineer, whoever was putting up the prefab. So they, somebody knew that it was over the elevation. Somebody knew that this plan that was, the first plan that was passed in, had the driveways to the front. Somebody knew that you don't just change the driveways without letting the Building Department know and specifically getting permission to do that. So before we go on any further, I need to know, somebody has to take responsibility for building this way too high and changing the driveway and putting garages, which we have all the plant, we see changes in the driveway, we don't see garages. And there are two, there's garages there, right? Okay, so could you find that out for me if there's somebody sitting here that would like to come up and discuss this? Because I would really like that now.
There's no requirement when you submit, you're referring to the very first site plan that was presented, which showed the driveways in the front prepared by Eastern Land Survey. There was then a, once the foundation gets poured, there was a plan submitted saying it meets all the requirements with respect to front rear yard setback, which it does. There is, the plan that was submitted for the structure itself never changed. That plan showed driveways on the right-hand side. When the prefab arrived, the driveways were already cut into the, were already cut into the foundation. Elevation never changed with respect to that pour. However, there is not, there is not a step that connects the building height to any kind of certification. When one of the building inspectors was on the site, he took a look, and he said, "The building looks high." We had it measured. Eastern Land Survey went out. That's what, it was at that moment that we realized that it was too high, that that resulted in the change from the driveways being in the front of the premises to being on the right-hand side of the premises. And who made that change is what you're wanting to ask me?
Number one, yes.
Okay, I believe that change was made out of, was made by our site contractor, and that our site contractor was looking at
Site contractor here?
Yes.
I'd like to hear from him. I don't want "I believe." I need to know. Somebody needs to take responsibility for this, because the fact of the matter is, it's built, it's prefab, I get it. And now, think of it on our end, it's all built, and you're coming here, and now you're asking for a variance. Variances are awarded before you build. So now it's built, now we're asking forgiveness. What message are you sending? "Oh, I guess we can just build whatever we want and come to the zoning board and ask forgiveness and ask for a variance." Now, I'm not saying that that happens, but it happens in this instance. And somebody needs to take responsibility. Otherwise, you know what? You don't want to know what I'm gonna say next. So I'd like to hear from somebody that actually was there building and putting together a house, and now realizing that it's too high.
Hi, Sean O'Neil, one of the developers. All the plans that were submitted from day one had the driveways going through the side. The house plans and the foundation plans.
Wait a minute. We have here, the driveways are in front.
I'm talking about the house plans. The actual house, structured plans and the foundation plans were submitted with the driveways on the right-hand side. What happened at the beginning of the project, there was a site plan, proposed site plan, that showed water and sewer. And I think there was an assumption that the driveways were going to be in the front. Now, that plan was submitted, but it was also submitted with the real house plans that we got permits for, that's showing the garages to the right-hand side. The foundations had the garages to the right-hand side. Nothing was changed at all. So if you had the actual structural plans, everything showed, and the foundation plans, everything showed to the right-hand side. Because when we, when we sat down to look at the house plans, it made sense because there was a lot more room on the right-hand side to support a two-car garage.
So we will take responsibility for it, but it was not intentional?
It was not intentional. Again, in hindsight, the original plot plan that had the utilities that were submitted, and then all the other plans were submitted, didn't match. We should have taken the site plan back and said, "Let's follow the house plans. The garage is going to the right-hand side." But it was a miss. But there was never any change in the plans. I promise you that. Correct. The structural plans and the foundation plans that were submitted showed the garages on the right-hand side.
You know, I'm having a hard time following this, because as a developer, you shoot, you know your grade, you shoot the grade. You know what you're ordered. You know where it's gonna sit on the foundation. You've never checked to see that, is it gonna be 30 feet high from your grade? That seems pretty basic to me. You know, to say there's no steps to say
What didn't get done?
You know, you know the bottom, and you know how big you ordered.
Right.
So from the bottom to the top is 32-something. You knew that. How could you not know that?
You don't necessarily put the structure itself when you submit the building plan and you say, "I want a building permit to be able to..." There isn't, there isn't a direct connection between the grade, which is being exhibited by the site plan, and the height of the building. It was really only when somebody was standing in the driveway, one of the building commissioners standing in the driveway, that it was said, "These look high. Can you shoot, you know, can you shoot that elevation? Tell us what that rooftop is." Eastern Land Survey went out and did that, and that's why we're here.
So when you did this shot to measure it, right?
The building itself is 30 feet. The building itself. It's the difference in the grading of that right-hand side of the premises that had the driveway come in in the front, there would have been an elevation change of about two feet, which would have accommodated this. But then that would have left a much more severe grade change between ourselves and our neighbor on the right.
Exactly. You knew the grade change was gonna be, was what it was gonna be. You knew the grade change was going to be, was what it was going to be. You knew where you're going to measure from. That's what I don't understand. I, I may, I'm missing something here.
I think we're all missing something here.
With engineering and, and surveyors and, and technology, I, I find it hard to believe that you can't say that, "I'm going to do this, put, I know what I ordered." You know, if I order an eight-by-ten rug, I'm pretty sure that rug's going to be eight-by-ten, I hope. All right? Might be eight-by-ten and a half an inch or something like that. But you knew what you ordered, you knew where it was going to sit, you should have, it's just a fact of measurement. Hey, we made a change here, we should shoot this to see where it's going to end up.
Yeah.
That's, that's my thought. Now, maybe I'm wrong and I'm not an engineer, thank you, but it just seems like common sense to me.
It's a question-
You know, I'll be, I'll give you my honest opinion. You put your order in for the prefab and you were going to put it up because it was already being built in the factory. How else would you, how else would it be anything different?
It was 30 feet, but that building was 30 feet.
Now, it is a 30 feet and now it is a 30 feet.
You can have a 30-foot building and put it up here-
Building itself is 30 feet, but from the grade on that side of the property, it shows to be 32.3.
Then I think you made a mistake.
But the building is not at all bigger than the building that was ordered and the building that was awarded the building permit.
Right, but the way it sits on the lot is 2 feet, 30 feet is 30 feet.
That's true, that's true.
That's the mistake that was made. Right? No one checked before they bought this house onto the lot to see, "All right, we know what the house is, is our grade right? Because when we put it wherever it's going to go, it can only be 30 feet in the air." And if it wasn't going to be 30 feet in the air, maybe you should have done something then with the grade.
The grade that was adopted was, it, there was a, our engineers had shot the grade as it is out at the sewer manhole and we found that we were at that same grade, so our sewer would work perfectly and we would not need to elevate the land on that neighbor's side of the property and went with it. However, you're correct that had someone been, someone been charged with the responsibility of saying, "Well, with this finished grade now, what is the height?" And that's what brings us here.
That someone has to be the builder, they're the one building the property.
And we will take responsibility for-
Well, that's all I'm asking you to do.
Yeah, we, we will take responsibility for having made that mistake.
You made a mistake.
We're trying to explain, however, how that mistake happened.
Okay.
And it was not intentional, it was not the matter of people saying, "Well, I've already ordered this, we're going to do what we damn well please." We could have filled that side if, if need be and brought it up the two feet that would have satisfied us and then had to make an apron down, but at the time, no one was aware. At the time that the grading, we would have had an apron now going down into, you know, a garage, but that would, you know, that's workable, it's usable, but there was no one aware that the 30-foot building now suddenly was 32.3.
Okay, so, I'm going to give you my, my thoughts and my opinion only, okay? I wrote by, it would, it's almost a mistake that's impossible to correct right now. You know, if it was a deck, we'd tell you to tear the deck down, you know, that's, that's not too costly, but to do what you have to do, to lower that thing two feet would, that would be, that would be a burden. I'm concerned about this letter from Ian Butter, all right, who's talked to the developers, all right? And I'll be honest with you, I'd be kissing the feet if she wants 10-foot trees, I'd give you 20. How tall do you want them? Where do you want them? When do you want them there? Because it's going to cost you a lot less money to do this.
We, we understand that.
Yeah, I, I was in communication with her all the way up until June. We talked about what she was doing with her landscaping. I picked up the phone every time she called. She said, "When your landscaping plans are, are complete, let's talk." We were very far from doing that, we were behind schedule, so our landscaping didn't get done until September, October. She was with the site contractor every step of the way with the building department to make sure what we were doing on this, on her side of the property, there was no, there was no water issues. Our site contractor actually stayed there when it rained to make sure the water was sufficiently being channeled and not, not touching her area or any other neighbor's area. So, to be honest, as, as a developer, I hire engineers, I hire site contractors, we try to appease the neighbors, okay? And I, I stayed in contact with her every day, out of sight, out of mind, she was out there every day that the contractor was, was grading the area to make sure that she had no problem with it. I didn't hear anything. Suddenly, she's decided that she has some issues and concerns. I tried reaching out to her, to talk to her again, and she's not talking to me. I have no problem meeting with her. We, we were going to plant some ivarities, but from the distance from where the riprap is in her fence, it's impossible. It's the way, it's the way the site contractor had to make sure that the water flow was going to be sufficiently flowing. Now, if she wants it behind her fence, that's fine. I mean, but behind her fence, I don't think it's going to give her much privacy. I don't know if any of the board members have been by the property.
Yeah.
We, you know, we did as much as we could, we, we've, we have retaining walls, it's beautiful, we have a wrought iron fence going around the driveway. One of my recommendations were to give you more privacy, we can change that to a vinyl fence. But she's not speaking to me. I intend to continue to reach out to her to make sure that she's happy. I mean, I, at any time, I've not ignored her and to be honest, I thought everything, I thought she was pleased with everything until she, you know, I-
To be applied for the variance.
Exactly.
Through the chair, the, the arborvitae is the landscaping that the neighbor addressed. Was that part of an original plan before? I don't see it on anything. Was that just a promise after the fact?
That was a promise made along the way when there was a discussion before this whole issue was brought up.
Okay. And then I have a question about the, the grade change, I was trying to grasp that. There was a question, there was a statement, I forget whether it was herself or the builder that mentioned it, that there was a plan to fill and raise the grade two feet, but when the driveways were moved, that changed?
Yes. If you look at the site plan, that, the original site plan prepared by Eastern Land Survey, I think you'll see that there's a grade of 51 that is a light-colored line going through the, going through the building. And then it shows harder lines that take us to 52 and 54.
Yep.
So, that would have been, in some spots, it would have been as three-foot fill and in other spots, down sort of at the end of what is now the driveway into the right-hand corner, it was as low as somewhere in the 40s. That's where our trench is. But yes, there would have needed to be a little bit of an elevation that would have come up.
Okay, so I guess my, my question then from that is, if that had happened, would the house be sitting at a different, forget 32.3 versus, if we, if you change the grade, it changes everything, but would the house still be at the same exact height in the air as it is today?
It's really the mean grade.
Okay.
It's not, it's not the actual height of the building.
It's, the height of the building today would be the exact same height.
The location of the building would be the same spot?
Correct. It's, it's the mean grade, yeah. It's the mean grade we have a challenge with. Now, if, if we were-
Okay, you answer it, thank you.
I understand from a board point of view, it's built, you have fencing, you, it still looks to us like you've changed a plan without coming in and saying, "Here, building department, we've changed a plan, what do we do now? Everything is signed, sealed, delivered, nice, oh, we're ready to sell and now you're asking forgiveness." So, you understand our concerns with that. Go ahead, Jack.
Yes, we do.
I'm going to open it up to the audience. Anybody in, in the audience to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition? We do have a letter that will be read in opposition by our secretary.
This letter is dated December 6th, 2019, to the Board of Appeal City of PVD regarding the petition for the variance by Sean O'Neill and John Zerpolo regarding 3 Calumet Street PVD. Let it be known to the board, I do not support the petitioner's request for variance regarding the height requirement of the above captioned, of the above captioned construction for the following reasons. The duplex facing my property was not built according to the plans presented to the board, it exceeded the height requirement of the allowed 30 feet by 2.3 feet. Why was the plan not followed and why did the building inspectors find the inaccuracy only upon inspection? Why didn't the petitioner's request a variance prior to the completion of the construction? The building is far too high even at 30 feet, however, that's acceptable to the zoning board. My property backyard, living room and bedroom abuts the property side of the building, I am facing an elongated driveway, two-car garage and three floors of living area. The contractors have made no effort to provide me with this privacy, despite my speaking to them on several occasions, I asked about a landscape design and was told by Mr. O'Neill that he had none. However, Mr. Zerpolo assured me that several mature 10-feet-plus-height arborvitae would be planted in the open dirt trench dug directly behind my wooden stockade fence. I was promised this and assured that the plantings would provide me privacy as well as aid in the water drainage by the trench, which was dug from Calumet to Sutton Street. This has not happened but was promised in front of two building inspectors. I was also promised a retaining wall, which I believe is the pile of boulders at the end of the driveway. At that location, I gained no benefit from snow being pushed into the trench and pressing against it, perhaps even corroding it. The contractors leveled their property by raising it two feet above my six-foot fence, allowing a view of a potential parking garage. It has completely ruined any privacy at all. I believe that these contractors intentionally knew what they were doing by building the duplex above the allotted height requirement as they have done with many other issues. Therefore, I say do not allow this variance. Myself and my neighbors have put up with enough concessions by these contractors who have ruined our neighborhood by their greed to build as many houses as they could for their own profit. It's an abortion to look at and should never have been allowed in the first place. Please, I beg you, make them take it down. That's the least you could do. Linda J. Pesco.
We have seen that letter and we cannot put the arborvitae in on the, possibility exists that we could put them in amongst the, or some shrubbery amongst the riprap. However, the, to locate the arborvitae within the trench will negate the, the usability of the trench and could we add plants in planters on top, you know, on the, on the driveway itself? Sure, we could do that. As Sean said, I mean, we're willing to replace our wrought iron fence with vinyl if that would be something that our neighbor would like to see, but I had one time had conversations with my folks about, essentially, she has a wooden fence, she has a vinyl gate, I thought, how about matching, you know, all of it as vinyl? And she didn't seem to want to pursue that and yes, it does appear that she's not communicating with us at the current time.
Through the chair, Attorney Kelty, I'm, you know, some of the board members have spoke, spoken already and they're having a hard time with it, I'm having a hard time as well and I can't see myself presently voting in favor of this variance. However, I, I might suggest that we continue this hearing if you think that you may have an opportunity to try to reach back out to the abutter who has written this letter, Linda Pesco, and perhaps reach some kind of an agreement with her because unfortunately, she's not here tonight, I don't believe, to come to some kind of a resolution, but unless, unless you guys get her on the same page, I'm going to have a hard time voting in favor of this variance application. And unfortunately, if we say no to the variance, certainly you have the right to appeal in court and I don't know what will happen then, whether or not the, the court, you know, if it goes the distance would make you tear down the structure, that remains to be seen and hopefully, for everybody's sake, we don't get that far. So anyways, I, just thinking out loud, I'd suggest a continuance unless you feel that every effort to reach this person has been exhausted and it would be, it would do you no good, but I don't think, you, you wouldn't have my vote tonight otherwise.
Through the chair as well, I just, I don't think my opinion is going to be a popular one among the board, so I just want, I'm going to put it out there now and then I'm going to just sit back and let the rest of you guys kind of do your thing with it, but I, I see it as a technical violation, a mistake was made, it's wrong, I don't like this coming back to us for permission after the fact, but I see it as a, if we had filled two feet, the house would still be the same height in the air, it would just be different reading from grade level, which to me seems like a technicality and I don't doubt Mrs.
Pesco's letter, but at the same time, I always, I always have a hard time with letters that
state that the building is too high at 30 feet, no, it's not. The landscaping was required, no, it wasn't, not from our board. A retaining wall was not a promise from our board and then whenever these terms intentionally are thrown about, I just, I just take a little bit of issue with it, especially where it's somebody's livelihood, I can't imagine they're going to risk their livelihood over the building of one home. So, it's, do I like it? No, but I don't, I guess I don't put quite as much stock into some of this, whether it's a popular opinion or not, I understand it's probably not going to be, but that's just kind of my thought on it.
If I could add to that, I, I will say that if, if you make an effort to, to contact the abutter between now and, you know, if we were to continue this hearing and you're unable to do so and then she doesn't show up next month to, to add to her letter and you guys have done all you can do, I would look at it differently. At this point, we've got a letter that's dated last week from her and she's got a lot of things in here, you know, whether or not there, you know, there's, some of them may have merit, some of them may not, but, but at this point, just based on what happened and just based on the fact that these are, you know, experienced builders, you know, there's, they use experienced engineers, they should have known that a 30-foot prefab with the grade as it was, was going to be 32 feet in the air and they needed to, to buy a 27-foot building so that it would fit, you know, on the right side. You know, you know, you do it and then you ask for forgiveness later, I, I never, I don't want to set a bad precedent. I think that was what, you know, the, the chair, you know, spoke about at the beginning, at the onset of this, at the outset of this, this application hearing. It's just that we, we can't be setting a precedent that you can, whether it was intentional or it wasn't intentional, the mistake was made and I, I just don't want to start granting things after the fact just because it would cost a lot more money to, you know, rip it down or to do something different to the grade and to, to be able to lower this house. I don't even know if that's a, I know you can jack a house up, but I don't know, can you lower a house? And what's the cost of that?
You could change the, the height of the roof, you could flatten it, you, but in this instance, that's extremely difficult because it's a prefab and the trusses that are up in that, you know, up in the ceiling are pre-engineered, they come as several pieces, they're manufactured, put together on the site and you would need to start changing everything up in that upper story, which is not impossible, but then you'd have to get someone, an engineer, to say that those changes did not impact negatively the structural integrity of the entire building. So, that, we've had that discussion with the building commissioner's office and that's one of the, you know, one of the compelling issues with respect to, and then there are a couple of other issues, can we build some retaining walls around the property and create something of a different grade that is more artificial, pretty unsightly, pretty, you know, kind of, we think more intrusive to our neighbors, not necessarily the neighbor to the right, but, you know, with respect to neighbors in the back and above us, but that's a, kind of a remote possibility to be able to do that. Third, you know, could we lift the, could we lift the driveway to a point where we got what we needed and then somehow cut the driveway such that you would now drive down a little bit into the basement? Could that be done? That's, that's probably another possibility. The only thing I don't like- The only thing I don't like postponing and having to, you know, prove how we, no objection to reaching out, no objection to, you know, and I understand completely the dilemma the Board finds itself in, but boy, have we empowered our other party. And, you know, maybe that's not the worst thing, but if the, it's as if, you know, now the feedback could be, you know, put on. So that puts us in an extremely compromised position. It would have been better if we were able to reach out before the meeting and have a response, and we were unable to. But we're not gonna fight about whether we reached out enough, too much.
I'd just add to that, and I don't want you to think that I'm putting any more weight on this abutter letter than we should, but I would suggest that your, your client was in, already in extreme compromised position because they've already built something, and now they're asking for a variance. Whereas, had they come in prior to with plans that were, you know, and they, they were gonna say, well, this is a 30-feet, 30-foot house, but because of the way the grade is, it's gonna be 32 feet, I think that's different, you know? And then if you have opposition to that, we listen to it, and, you know, not, not that much money spent. Obviously, we're in a spot now, and, you know, obviously, we have to consider the economics of it all, and the fact that the house has been built, I think is definitely something that we'll gonna weigh when we make the, make a decision. I think, you know, just like we're gonna consider any positive or, you know, a butter that's in opposition to the, to the application. So, again, I, I don't feel comfortable voting in favor. I also prefer not to have to vote because I don't, I don't see, you know, but, but again, I may just, I'm just one person. I mean, there's, there's four other votes, and it sounds like you've got one that's gonna vote in favor, so.
So I just have one more thought. And this really doesn't even have to be answered, it's just a thought. If the building inspector did not drive by and say, wow, this looks a little tall, would, would the builders have said, oh, uh-oh, let's measure this, it's a little tall, and come before us for a variance? It, it's, it doesn't have to be answered, it's just a little food for thought. But I also do feel, as Dan does, that if nothing else, at least try to make that neighbor a little more agreeable to this because this is setting a, a very poor example for us and for everybody else listening and for any other builder. It just, you built it, and now it's so difficult to take down the roof, or it's so difficult to fill in the garage to make every, the driveway, so now we have to ask forgiveness. It's, it's a very, very, very poor policy. So I think that if nothing else, it's worth one more month and try to get in touch with that neighbor and see what happens.
Through the chair, if I could. Here's my concern, okay? They had conversation. They had conversation right up till, I don't know when it ended, but she, in her own letter, says she's, she was working with these people up until probably it went to the ZBA. I don't think she's gonna talk to him until this is resolved at the ZBA. Because if we say no, it doesn't matter. We, if we make him lower the, it doesn't matter. If we prove, now she fills that feedback, Jack, and she's, she can fill that feedback because the cost of that feed is a lot less than what could happen here in the alternative. So I know the fear is she could pile it on, but I think she's in a position of strength to pile it on, unless you, you wanna take, take an effort to, to bring this into conformance, and I don't think the money you wanna spend to do that. I think you should be able to get in touch with her and find out just what she wants. But I'll be honest with you, I don't think it's gonna happen until it's resolved.
Nice to have her come to the meeting, but it would be nice to just, you know, if she wants, and it's not up to her, but it, it, it's such, it's such a mistake, it would be nice to make, at this point, everybody agreeable because it's...
Disagree with that. You know, had the communication continued, we'd probably be there this evening, you know, with some sort of instrument in hand or conditions that we would ask to be placed on it.
Do you, I mean, I know you represent, you've got a couple of clients here, there's a partnership. I don't know if one of them, she's not talking to one, but maybe she talked to the other. I, I don't know if that's...
I believe the way it happened, that when she decided not to speak with my clients, that it was both. I can count, so I think I'm gonna ask that the matter be continued.
Would it, through the chair, I don't know if this has ever been done, ever, ever, could the Board send a communication to her and tell her that it was up, but we had a difficult time understanding exactly what she wanted? And until, unless she comes, or at least talks to the contractor, we'll never be able to resolve this because we really don't know what she wants, what's there. I, I don't, you know? Tell her it's important, you know, we're gonna have to vote on this, one way or the other.
I'll just add, sorry, through the chair, that I certainly would take it into consideration, take it into consideration if we reach out to her and we don't hear back, and you've reached out to her, if you can document your efforts between now and the next hearing so that I, you know, that we can understand that every effort was made, you know, a couple of emails, a couple of phone calls, you know, whether it's by you or your clients. If you can report that back to us, and then all we have to go off is her letter, then we'll, we'll make a decision based on that. That's all I could say.
I think the Board wants to make every effort for resolution. We don't, we don't want the worst-case scenario, we want the best. And with this letter, we need to know, what's it gonna take to satisfy?
That being said, just, just one more question. How exactly, I mean, how really did this happen? I mean, just grading, is that what, is, is just, you know, the grading of this and that? I mean, you know, you, you purchased a big prefab, but in the...
It's 30 feet.
Right, but...
And that's why the building permit issued.
But it's not 30 feet anymore, so, so the grading was...
The building itself is still 30 feet. That was Stephen's point, and that was what Sean was trying to explain, you know, the building...
The building is, right.
Never changed.
I get that.
Right. But yes, the grading impacts it because it's on a slope such as this. We've got an elevation here, which is very protective on the high side. That's very protective of our rooftop.
Okay, here's a question. So was it graded before the purchase? I mean, so should have that been taken into consideration before the purchase?
I don't know the answer to that one, in terms of, you know, when you buy a building and it's 30 feet and that, your compliance should...
So you have, you have a piece of property, and you wanna buy a prefab? And, and you know all the requirements that are, that are needed? But it's, this is flat land, so, okay, this fits fine. So you're saying that...
I can answer that part of the question, is that, you know, should someone have aligned all the stars and planets such that when the building got purchased and we knew it was 30 feet, should someone have made damn sure that the grade on the right-hand side did not betray us, in a sense? Yes, that should have happened.
And who does that blame lie on?
My clients, the contractors, as well as...
So he's the grader? He, he's, he's, he's...
Well, he hired the person who graded it.
And who is that?
Who graded it?
Yeah, do we know that?
I told you that, John Karamis.
Oh, oh, I didn't, I must have missed that.
Yep.
So, motion to continue the public hearing.
Second.
January 20.
And this would be the motion to continue the public hearing to the next scheduled zoning Board of Appeals meeting, which is January 27, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium.
Thank you. Did we get a vote? We just did a motion and a second.
Did you second it?
Yeah.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Number six.
Notices hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Pevy D. will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Pevy D., on the application of Devisie Estate of Mary A. O'Neil and Estate of James E. Waters et al., carer of attorney T. Michael Sullivan, for an administrative appeal from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 15-6, as it applies to the premises known as 5 Stevens Street, Pevy D., map 75 lot 243. Petitioner seeks administrative appeal from letters dated April 18 and September 30 of this year from City of Pevy D. Building Commissioner Al Talarico, and letter dated October 23, 2019, from Code Enforcement Officer Randy Sukney. Properties located in R2 zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. The application and plot plan will also be available at the time of the public hearing. There is a letter dated today, December 16, to Carla McGrath, regarding 5 Stevens Street. Dear Madam Clerk, on behalf of the Devisies of the Estate of Mary Water, the heirs of Mary A. O'Neil, the heirs of James E. Waters and Edward Water, I hereby withdraw my appeal application without prejudice from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 15-6, as it applies to the premises known as 5 Stevens Street, Pevy D., map 75 lot 243. Thank you sincerely, T. Michael Sullivan. Motion to accept the attorney's withdrawal.
Okay. Number...
Notices hereby given that the Board of Appeals of City of Pevy D. will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Pevy D., on the application of Elizabeth Graezek for variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 7 Hillside Ave., Pevy D., Mass., lot 120, map 120 lot 5. Petitioner seeks relief to the right-side yard where 15 feet are required, eight plus or minus feet are proposed. The property is located in R1A zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. The application and plot plan will also be available at the time of the public hearing.
Hello, my name's Jeff Maguire. I live at 89 Fairview Ave., and I'm here on behalf of my mother-in-law, Elizabeth Graezek, 7 Hillside Ave. So basically, what we wanna do is take an existing half-bath on the first floor and turn it into a full bath. We're just trying to anticipate her future needs. The building is currently pre-existing non-conforming on the side lot line, and we're not gonna go any further into that side lot line. We're just gonna continue the existing structure straight back. We're only adding five feet towards the rear lot line.
You are anticipating maybe making this handicap accessible?
I don't wanna say it's gonna be handicap accessible because there's some confinement in the kitchen area that leads to this bathroom, but it's gonna be much easier for her to navigate, and I don't think we can fit, you know, a 36-inch door and things like that, but it's gonna make her life a lot easier, especially in the near future. There is a deck there now, and we're not gonna go beyond the lines of the deck either. We're staying within the structure of the deck that's there presently.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition, hearing none of the matters before the Board.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to approve.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Notices hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Pevy D. will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Pevy D., on the application of 65 Central Street LLC for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 65 Central Street, Pevy D., Mass., map 75 lot 99. Petitioner seeks relief to the right-side yard where 15 feet are required and three feet plus or minus are proposed. Property is located in R1A zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. Application and plot plan will also be available at the time of the public hearing.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. My name's Aurelio Larrero, and I own 65 Central Street. And what I'm trying to do is upgrade it, the, what's there. It's been called like a dog shed, and it's dilapidated, you know, through the years, and it's hard to, when I walk into it, I keep on bumping my head, and it's not up to code. So when I came to apply, they told me I had to get a variance. So what I ended up doing was getting an architect, Joe Betancourt, and Arthur Betancourt, contractor. All three of us came out with the set of plans that are in front of you. So that's what they say, kinda, you know, uniforms the, the building. So that's basically it.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor? In opposition, hearing none of the matters before the Board.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion to approve.
Favor? Any opposed? You're all set.
Thank you very much. Have a nice holiday.
Notices hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Pevy D. will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16, 7:00 p.m., Wigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, Pevy D., on the application of Tom Hensley, carer of Roger Creighton, for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended section 7-2, as it applies to the premises known as 13 Oak Ave., Pevy D., map 114 lot 47. Petitioner seeks relief to the rear yard where 35 feet are required and five plus or minus feet are proposed. Property is located in R1 zoning district. The application and plot plan are available to the public and can be viewed at the City Clerk's Office and Board of Appeals Office, City Hall, in advance and prior to the public hearing. Application and plot plan will also be available at the time of the public hearing.
Good evening. My name's Roger Creighton, Creighton Builders. Mr. Hensley's not here tonight. He wanted to be, but he had a emergency with his family. But I'm here to represent him. What we have over there was, behind his house, he had a 10-by-11 concrete slab that was existing, where he had a screenhouse on it, and last fall, a limb, a limb come down and crushed it. So he called me, and I went over there, we took a look at it, and what he wants to do is raise that 30 inches onto a deck and put a screenhouse. Now, the reason he needs a screenhouse with a roof is he got in a very bad, bad accident 78 years ago, and he's 100% dis... 78 years ago, and he's 100% disabled. So he can't be in the sun. He has skin grafts all down the side of his body, and, I mean, he's a mess. But he needs something bug-free and no sun. So we decided to go ahead and go with a 10-by-12 behind the house. But as we got started and went in the permit process, it's too close to the fence, so that's why we're looking to get a variance on this. There's rarely no other spot in that property to do it. I mean, there's no 35-foot setbacks basically anywhere at that house, or many houses in that neighborhood. It's very tight. And so he's just looking for a spot where he doesn't have to sit in his living room day and night, get outside, get some fresh air.
Through, through the chair. Sir, are you a builder?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I just, I'm not sure if you assisted the applicant with the application or not. But just, I just wanna point out, on our application in paragraph 16, we'd say the hardship, you know, pre-existing non-conforming is one thing, but I would also have added that it really had to do with the shape of the lot, in that, that's why you do need that variance. I just, I would add that. I mean, we appreciate, obviously, the situation with the applicant, and, you know, obviously, you know, it's information that we need to take into consideration. But also, we just wanna stress that, you know, you do need to meet a hardship, which, when I look at the plan, I see right, it jumps out at me that the shape of the lot is really the reason why you aren't able to fit it anywhere else. So I just point that out, but I have, I have no problem with this.
Anybody in the audience to speak in favor?
Hi, my name's Caroline Sacker. I'm Tom's neighbor. I live next door. I have absolutely no problem with this porch, and I think I'm the only house in the neighborhood that can even see it, which is probably why there's nobody else here. But yeah, I have no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In opposition? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing. Second. Motion to approve. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, sir.
Thank you.
10, we have something to be read.
Okay, so number 10, this is regarding the application of Edward and Angela Schrej, regarding 7 Reed Road. We have a letter dated December 2nd. Dear Chair and Board Members, we respectfully ask that our application for zoning variance be withdrawn without prejudice. Sincerely, Edward and Angela Schrej. So I make a motion to allow the withdrawal without prejudice on this application.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. All set? Motion to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. All done.